Welcome to everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. One of the commissioners is running late, but we're going to get the initial things that we do out of the way, and he'll be here shortly. Welcome, everybody. There's a quorum present. Ask that you stand for the opening prayer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Shelby, you want to pray for us? Or you want to continue?
Heavenly God, we thank you for this day and all that you've blessed us with. We ask that you be with all our police officers, as this morning in San Diego, another officer was killed. We ask that you bring peace to our country and help us to elect a president of our choice for betterment of our country and our world.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I see you please? Has anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, one question. Joe Baker?
Go. Good morning, Joe. Good morning. I'll be brief. I know it's a long agenda and you've got a lot of important work ahead of you, but I just want to say a few things about the collection station. Recently found myself with some spare time on my hands, so I started cleaning out the garage. We had a lot of old junk furniture, kids' toys, things like that, that had just accumulated in the garage. So last week, I made two trips to the collection station during the hours that are posted on the sign. No one was there. Now, I went on Saturday. There was a person there, but the person at the collection station said that all they were taking at this time were trash inside plastic bags, that you couldn't leave, you know, broken furniture or things, large items of that kind. And I talked to Shelby about this since then, and he said that the rules are as they stand, that you can't leave large items, as long as it's household waste. I believe that's where you draw on it. So I just wanted to ask you to think about reorganizing what's happening over there. I know it's on the agenda for today, and think about maybe if you change the hours, install a new sign with the current hours on it, and think about maybe the possibility of putting a phone number there, so that if somebody travels 30 miles from one end of the county to the collection station, you know, they'll be able to leave their trash there without any problems. So just wanted to consider that and let you know that it's great service to the community. I know you don't want people leaving it on the roads or anywhere else. You'd rather them leave it there than on the side of the county road, so just consider that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
If I could, just to respond to that right quick before the item, we do have the signs paid. We're going to put them up as soon as I know that the hours have been officially changed, though. Depending on what happens today, then we will have them up yet this afternoon. That's what you all decide. They're ready to go.
All right. Let's see, we're not going to have Adam 6 today, I believe. And in his place, we're going to move Adam 16 up to Adam 6. Adam 16 is discuss, approve, disapprove, renewal, upgrade of the postage machine contract for the NX offices. And the presenter is a NEOPost representative, and we've moved it up to, he's from out of town, to give him an opportunity to go ahead and make his presentation, and we'll let him get out of here, get back to work. So, I haven't met him, I don't know his name. I'm sorry. I should have come and talked to you and didn't, but glad to have you with us if you'll go forward with your presentation.
Well, thank you for having me. My name's Jared Reyes. I am the NEOPost representative. We've been in business with you guys for about over 10 years or so, so we've been your mail service provider, and obviously the machine that we've had with you guys is the little post machine you guys have out on the table, on the lobby there. Contract is currently coming to an expiration. The whole term of length was 63 months at an $83 rate. The contract is expiring in September, and it'll be about the middle of September, so we're hoping to get a contract or purchase order signed by mid-August. Current system, I passed the papers here, but the current system that you have is the IS-230, simple system, prints your mail. The upgraded system that we are proposing is the IN-360. It's going to include a postage labeled dispenser, you know, packages, and include the sealer, so you no longer have to lick your envelopes, as well as a cash tray. There's no additional cost for keeping at the same rate, $83 for a 60-month contract, which is basically a free upgrade with the approval of your business going forward. Second machine that we wanted to present to you guys, because we've noticed over the time that your postage always have increased from about $2,000 to $3,000 now, and that's per month. We wanted to propose this machine here as well. This is certainly an upgrade. It's a power-assisted automatic feeder mail machine, has a face deck. Certainly, you just stack your mail down, press the button, and it'll weigh across. No more having to individually go with each one. Just about 125 letters per minute. Will still include a five-pound weight platform, label dispenser, and will also have the sealer reservoir that I just mentioned. I have two proposed books here for your review. Like I said, we're hoping to get to lead in by August, since you guys are out here in Garn City, about, you know, two hours from the city, so we'll have to take about two, three weeks to get that set up ready. So I'll leave the proposal with you. Communicate anything I need to apparel, and just please get back to me when you can.
That second machine that you mentioned, what's the cost increase for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. The cost increase is, for a 63-month, that would be $115, so about $30.
63 per month? Is that right?
Eighty-three per month, currently.
What?
The upgrade one is $115, $115? I will remind the court that his postage estimates did include the time period that the sheriff's office was in this building, and now they have their own machine.
I'm sorry, say again, you want to...
The postage estimates that he included, the $2,000 to $3,000, included the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office now has their own postage meter at the new location, so the postage usage here will decrease.
Is there any estimate of that much?
I have no idea. This is the first I've known that this was even going to be presented. There is a tracking mechanism on the current machine that itemizes out by the departments that uses it, and Carol's office keeps track of that, so I'm sure we can get an estimate on how much the sheriff's office has used.
Judge, I believe it's around $500 a month for us, so it's, you may take $500 off that $2,000 or $3,000 a month. I have that to give you approximate figure. That's what ours is averaging, about $500 a month. So it's been running, what, $3,000 each month? So roughly, it's going to go down $500 off of that estimate.
Well, I hear you and understand what you're saying, but we'll see.
Okay.
I'm a little doubtful of whether those figures will hold that way. We'll see.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Anything else?
No. I mean, if I had to make a decision, I would stick with the one that would be the same cost that we're paying now. I don't think we need to upgrade to a bigger fancy machine. I think that the one that you proposed at the same cost per month would be adequate for what we're doing, what we still do here.
I'm curious. I have a note here that y'all have been in business with us for over 10 years. Is that...
Right.
Is that what you said? But our contract was a 60-month contract.
Yes, it was.
We had a different contract before that.
Yes.
And the 83 per month is going to be, if we don't change, will be the same amount?
It'd be an upgrade on the machine, but it would be the same amount.
Same amount per month for 60 months?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the court?
Does the current machine malfunction? And it needs to be replaced?
No, just out on the contract.
So what if they maintain the machine they have right now?
Actually, if you maintain the current system and just go off the contract, and obviously, you know, if you were to lease an apartment, month to month, it, you know, costs increase, so keeping the machine would actually cost you 20% more, because I just add that on, so we obviously just recommend the upgrade at the same cost that you currently pay.
Say all that again. You speak first, and then I can listen. And I apologize, I'm slow, Mr.
The current machine, since it's going to be out for the contract, once it goes to a month-to-month rate, NEOPost does charge a 20% increase, so rather than have you go to a month-to-month rate, we just want to put you into a new contract, a new system.
For how long? For who's? Five years again?
Well, you have, I have three different options on there, three, four, and five.
Have we got copies of the proposed contract? I don't, I'm not going to look at it now.
I don't know that that's really a contract. It's just a proposal or the presentation, but the three years, much more, right?
Yes.
Per month?
The three-year contract?
A 39-month contract would be $149 a month. 51 months? Oh, that's on the other machine, I'm sorry. That was that upgraded machine, correct?
It should be the paying for that.
Maybe I have the wrong place.
Well, if I understand, we can renew the contract we have with the same machine or the same...
It'd be a new machine.
...model. It'll be a new machine, but basically the same machine.
It would be an upgrade.
And it's not going to cost any more money. It's going to be the same price for a five-year contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
So a 36-month contract for that machine would be $105.06 per month. For 48 months, it would be $91.22, and for the 60-month, it's $83.
Say all those again. Let's send it back to her. I asked her the same one.
You want to do the same.
Okay.
For 36 months, it would be $105.06 per month. For 48 months, it would be $91.22 per month, and for 60 months, the $83.
Which the 83 is what it is currently?
And that's what we're paying currently.
Yes.
Is there any reason that anybody has that why we should not renew it for 60 months? I mean, if it were in my business, that's what I would do.
That would be $22 a month saved. Renewing it for 60 months instead of 36.
Which is $1,320 over the term of the contract. It's not bad. Feel good. I mean, we'd be dumb if we don't try to save money for the county, it seems to me. As far as my part of the tax money is concerned, I wish we would save some.
When does the renewal kick in? What do you think?
It would actually kick in, so when we get a contract signed or we get our order processed, it'll probably take about, that's why I want to get it done a little earlier, about three weeks until we get it installed, so we start the new contract at the installation. So it kind of just depends on you all.
And what time does the one expire that we have now, when is, what date?
We have the date September 9th. We're all confirmed with Carol.
And we will have a, we can have a new one in place, the same contract, by the time that expires? Is that correct?
Yes.
So that we will not be paying an additional amount for any period of time?
Yes. That is my call.
Is that what you're saying?
That's my call.
Okay.
I would move that we approve a five-year renewal with the company, should begin at the expiration of the current contract, to include the upgraded machine.
My second.
Any further discussion from the court?
Staying to $83 per month.
It seems to me that we would be dumb if we didn't do that, that way. I don't like to be dumb, although I'm accused of it rather regularly by some of the taxpayers, and that's okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify or raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voted for, and that's the, that'll be the judgment of the court and the motion carries. Thank you for coming. We appreciate what you all have done in contingency force. And if you need anything from us, be sure and let us know. Don't sit back and swoop down and surprise me someday. I don't like surprises at all. So we need to stay in contact if there's anything that we need to know, and if we think there's something you need to know, we'll be in contact.
May I ask for, who cuts the purchase orders for this building?
Ask what?
Who cuts the purchase orders for this building?
I will.
You will?
I'll do that for you.
He's the county clerk. Okay.
No further questions?
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
We've enjoyed doing business with you all. We're back to Adam 7 on the agenda. Receive open proposal for services of the independent audit for fiscal year ending 9/36 for Cornish County. It's a little hard to tell. Oh, the Beasley Mitchell Company is that one? That's what it says here. Los Cruces, New Mexico. Was it said one of... Melinda's. Origin ID LRUA was in the... Okay. I'm pretty dumb. I like to really notice I'm dealing with, so I assume there's one to catch, because that's still you.
Yes, it is. That's my check.
Okay. Since you, and you didn't open it and haven't looked at it?
No, sir, I have not.
If you want to open it, it's addressed to you, not addressed to me. I'll have to find that open.
Hold on, you had it.
There's one, be sure that you...
Thank you.
While the judge is looking over that, is there a standard format where you ask for when you go out for proposals?
The proposal was advertised in the paper as well as on the website. We were contacted by two people for the actual RFP. I don't remember this particular name, so my guess is they didn't follow the exact RFP, but that can be taken into consideration when we evaluate.
We know it was just forwarded. That's the sealed proposal independent audit.
Do they have it? They don't have mine in order?
Well, it has the company's name, the city, that it's to them. Why doesn't have their name that says a sealed proposal for independent audit?
Right. They're the ones that's...
From them. But it's not addressed to them.
I want to know.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, I'm, this is 23 pages long, and this is the first time I've seen it, or anybody else on the court, I believe, has seen it. And we're going to have to review it, and have it reviewed by an attorney probably, before we announce whether we're going to accept, who we're going to accept.
Yes, sir. This item is just to open and receive them, and then the next item is to set a date to award.
And I would set the date for the next meeting.
August 9.
I don't see any reason to put it all further.
Right, because we need to get all the...
We need to get it, yeah. And so we'll put this as an item to award the contract for the next commissioner's court meeting, which is when?
August 9.
August 9. That's on a Tuesday.
So then we'll move to agenda item number eight on that one? Put a vote on it? To set the date?
Yes, we will. Okay. On item eight, discuss that date to award the proposal, and how it is that you set it for the next commissioner's court meeting, which is tonight, is that what you want?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to set it for August 9th to award a proposal for independent audit for fiscal year ending 9/36.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Jared.
Did you renew these all back to the one or two?
Yes, yes. All of that, we'll put on the motion, no comments from the court. All in favor of the motion, signify or raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voted for, motion carries.
Let it be noted that I gave you all these audits, right?
All I really gave is one copy each.
And the item eight, the next item on the agenda is set the date, and we're going to set it for the next commissioner's court meeting, which is...
August 9.
Item nine on the agenda, discuss act on the favor of county sales tax overpayment. The auditor was by my lawn.
Good morning. Just a little update on the overpayment. I've been in contact with Shirley Katz with the Compteur's Office, and the auditor and I have been working on this together, and she suggested that I contact them again and ask exactly what was overpaid. EOG was the company that had overpaid, and once we found that information out, then we'd make a second request on exactly when those purchases were and what those purchases were. So Mary and I now are working together on getting that letter together for the judge to sign that request. So right now, we're not making any decision. We're just waiting for some more information.
And the overpayment was alleged to be, how much?
It was from, it was in fiscal year, oh, I'm sorry, 2012 through 2014.
Say the number one more time, I'm sorry.
Sure. And we did the first open records request, and we found out it was EOG. Now, the second open records request we're going to do is going to show the documentation of what they purchased and why they thought they should pay the sales tax on it.
Okay. All right. We'll put that on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm always playing the what-if game, but these companies all talk. Is there a possibility that other companies could be coming forward and alleging the same over, you know, overpayment of...
I would say yes. I mean, if they were just wheeling and dealing so quickly that they didn't realize that they shouldn't have been paying taxes on that, because everything was moving so quickly, there could be others, but they have to prove their documentation.
I understand, but I mean...
The state, but it, I would say...
And the budgeting process is just a question that I would have.
Well, that would be an unforeseen situation should it arise again.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I hope somebody's even thinking about it or looking at it.
If that was another company, I'd be looking at it.
Right.
It could be very expensive.
All right. We'll report further at the next one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Then you're on the next item, discuss act on establishing salary grievance committee pursuant to local government code, section 152.0141, determination of the composition of the salary grievance committee, and the auditor was by.
Yes, sir. According to the statute, the salary grievance committee can be set if an elected official is not happy with the salary that has been set for them by the commissioner's court. It's a, there's a timeframe, and one has to be set and one has to be done, so we're following within that timeframe. You have two choices, and I think the agenda actually says it's the citizens one on there. The grievance committee could be the sheriff, county tax assessor collector, county treasurer, county clerk, district clerk, county attorney, or criminal district attorney, and a number of public members necessary to provide nine voting members, or nine public members if the commissioner's court wants to have nine public members. So we need to both set the, to establish the committee, and then the next one is to choose the committee.
These are items 10 and 11 on the agenda. 10 is discussion of the salary grievance committee, and then 11 is the selection of the public members and alternate members. And my recommendation would be that we select all of the grievance committee from public members and not from any of the elected officials or any of, anybody else other than public members. I think that's the best way to do it. I think that's what ought to control it. I think that I'm supposed to be a non-voting member of it if I understand I'm not posting that right. If I am, well, so I am.
It says, excuse me, the county judge is chairman of the committee but is not entitled to vote. Yes, sir.
That's what I understood.
Yes, sir.
And I will do that, whatever my responsibility is. And if anybody, anybody in the public has anything they want to say to the committee or anybody else, we will post some kind of notes at meetings of the committee, and they can always contact my office and find out when the committee's going to meet and whose office it's in.
So you need a motion, Judge?
I think probably so.
The move that we establish a salary grievance committee, and the committee, in the same motion, the committee be composed of public community members?
Now, I don't, I'm not prepared to recommend the members this morning or select them this morning.
Nine public members?
And if anybody on the court has members that they wish to recommend?
I think there's a process.
There's a process, Judge. According to the statute, it's members of the last grand jury of the last calendar year, and Carol has all the names from the last grand jury.
But we're not going to select the whole grand jury?
No, it's just nine members.
We need to have recommendations on what members to select, if I understand, is it...
We just basically draw their names out of the hat.
You draw names.
Okay.
We're going to do nine of them.
It specifically says draw names?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We're going to do whatever the statute says.
Shelby, motion needs to second, I'll say.
Okay. I don't have an issue with what's going on, but do we have a grievance request that consists of this?
Apparently, I made a request.
Well, I think we need to have one just in case for the budget process. Do you mean a written request?
She's making a request now.
I understand that. I guess I'm saying is, is there someone grieving?
We had put this on the agenda last year, and when Mary was reviewing the agendas from last year at this time, she called me, and she said, hey, we put this on the agenda last year, and... last year, and there was some conversation that there will be some cuts on elected officials' salaries. Whether or not that's in the past or not, I don't know, but we need to have it in place just in case, because the statutes tells us we can have that in place. So we're just, and there's a timeframe. Once it's, the budget is given them, they have ten days to file that grievance, and we need to make sure we're all in line with that, we have enough time for it. I do not have anything in writing, Judge Reynolds, I'm sorry, Commissioner Reynolds, sorry.
That's fine.
I don't have anything in writing, but we're just trying to make sure in case there is something, then we've got it.
Okay, we're covered.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Vi, that you care to make, or want to make today?
I'm good right now, sir. Thank you.
Okay. You've said everything you need to say.
I think so.
All right. We appreciate your attention to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you'll stay in touch, and we'll...
Well, we have the names here, and we need to, we need to...
Have you got the name?
The county clerk does. Because it tells you, before the meeting, the county clerk shall place on a separate slip the name of each person.
We've got a motion, we've got a motion in the second.
To establish the committee.
That is.
Okay, and is there any further discussion on the motion before the court?
One other thing, on this motion, it's gonna be to establish the committee, is that nine members, right? How many alternates?
He said nine public members.
Four.
How many alternates? I don't know if there is.
Four alternates, or when we make the motion, we get handed in?
Is there?
It just says nine public members.
Is that?
I don't think it provides for all of them. I may be wrong.
I'm not, what I'm reading. I just read nine, nine members.
It just says that the list of alternate is exhausted or does not exist, a replacement shall be selected at the next regular Commissioners' Meeting. So I would pick nine and four more, because they can refuse to be on it.
Right. I'm saying to get at least four alternates, and they're adding them to the motion, so we know we got them.
It just tells you to make a list of alternate, it doesn't give you a number, how many.
We need to advertise this in the paper, and if anybody's interested in serving on that committee, they need to come by the office and let us have their names and addresses, and we get in touch with them.
No, the statute tells you it has to be from, there's a way to do it. It's from, yes.
Well, they still need to come by here.
Once we pick them, yes.
I think they need to come by and tell us the last, the members of the last grand jury. Is that, that's who?
Yes, and it tells you...
Okay, is it all of the members that were on the list for the grand jury, or only the ones that served on the grand jury?
All the ones that were listed on the grand jury, and it tells you to draw their names. The county clerk shall place on a separate slip the names of each person who served on a grand jury in the county during the preceding calendar year. At the meeting, the slips shall be folded, placed in an appropriate container, and mixed. The county judge shall draw at random a number of slips equal to the number of public members needed for the committee, and shall announce the names on the slip.
And we'll need nine public members, which is what I want.
Right.
And if you'll prepare the list.
She has it right there. Ready to go?
Are we, are we to do it today?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do y'all want to vote on that, establishing it first?
We would.
And I'll fold these.
We're ready. Go ahead and put them. Okay. All in favor of the motion before the court, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for it.
So is that for number ten and eleven together, or just number ten?
Ten, I agree with that.
Okay, okay.
We could draw this, but until we, have you talked to any of these people?
No.
Because you wouldn't have had reason to. And we should, seems to me, contact all the people whose names are going to be put in and see if they're willing to serve, and, or if they're not all willing to serve, who is and who isn't. It seems dumb to me to draw some that might not be willing to serve and then have to go through this again, which is what we'd have to do, I think.
Well, I think your list of alternates would be any remaining individuals.
Everybody that's left of the thing, you think, well, that suits me, all right, I'm not sure if that's the proper way to do it, but...
Just keep drawing them. I want you to do the nine members, and draw individually, to make the list, if you want, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying whatever is left in there.
All that are left could be added to the list.
I'll say it. County judge, says county judge.
Y'all shake it up. I won't say. You know, when anybody, well, I won't say the word.
Don't look at the name.
Fussing about.
Shh, don't matter.
Tom Porter. Is it permissible for me to write the order that I drew these in?
Yes, sir.
Ernestina De La Garza, number two. Ronald R. Kinney, number three. Jamie Albert, number four. Number five, Barbara Braun, or they might pronounce it Bronny.
Braun, B-R-A-U-N-N-E?
Yeah.
Braun.
Well, I'm not in that family, and I don't know how they pronounce it, but if it's Braun or Bronny, use one.
Braun.
That's number five. Number six is Cecil Jones. Number seven is Jim Pogue. Number eight, Linda Torres. Number nine, Janice Blusky. Number ten is Margaret Gothor. Number eleven is Sandra Loya. Number twelve is Alicia Wright.
W-R-I-G-H-T?
W-R-I-G-H-T.
Okay, thank you.
Number thirteen is Ophelia Torres. Fourteen is Brian Uridus. Well, it's not that twelve of them declined to serve.
I'd go ahead and draw all of them.
Draw all the numbers, yeah.
I'll draw all the numbers, and make time before it. Well, somebody's not doing it.
I did, I made that comment, that it tells you to keep drawing the list until, a list of alternates is made, that's until you win the start.
And I'm gonna draw them all.
There you go. Sounds like a plan.
Fourteen, let's see, this is fifteen, Marissa Beaver. Sixteen is Daniel Asparza. Seventeen is Roger Gaskin. Eighteen is Paul Martinez. Nineteen is Lisa Bell. Twenty is Amelia Martinez. Proper pronunciation would probably be Amelia Martinez. And that was number eighteen.
No, twenty's twenty, that's twenty.
No, number twenty, I'm sorry. Number twenty-one, Melissa Sutton. Number twenty-two, Adrian Garcia. Number twenty-three is James Gavrelo. And number twenty-four, which is the last one, is Jimmy D. Lawyer. We'll contact all those people and have a report on who has agreed to serve on the committee at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yes, I'll take that.
You're gonna take it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The first nine that agree to accept the position will be the grievance committee, and the necessary number of the others will be the alternate members. That all agree to serve, if they don't agree, they won't be part of the committee or alternate. Is there any other discussion on either Item Ten or Eleven? If not, Item Twelve on the agenda, discuss approved/disapproved reassignment of 911 and Special Projects Offices to Roden Bridge Department in the affected date. And David Reynolds is the author of that, Dave?
Thank you, Judge. As we've talked about in court and in private over a period of time, and Dale and I have discussed, and I hope I still have his acquiescence on this, the, those two offices have a good fit, perhaps some synergies to be gained by moving to Roden Bridge, a possibility of some cross-training, so the people involved would have a little more backup than they have now. Dale, as far as I know, agrees with accepting them into his realm, and I guess proper would be incorporating their budgets into the Roden Bridge structure. Right now, as it stands, they will stay in their present location pending a different facility for Roden Bridge that will give them the opportunity, or give those, excuse me, give those two offices the opportunity to move under the same roof as the remainder of Roden Bridge. There's not enough room in the existing Roden Bridge offices for them to be able to move currently. And then that's not a reason to go out and buy a building for Roden Bridge, but at some point, probably, it will happen, and at that point, they can move over there. Beyond that, I don't have a whole lot to say about it. Dale, do you have any comments? Do you have any thoughts worthy of bringing forward?
Well, just to confirm, you say the two offices work closely together. All the permitting that they do, 911, they utilize our engineering facilities and skills, so it's a, it makes sense to put them under the Roden Bridge Department.
I don't, I'm not aware of any pushback or issues anywhere. It's not a sleight of hand or gotcha or anything of that nature. Hopefully, it will gain some efficiencies and better utilization. My personal proposal would be that they, this become effective beginning of the next budget year, rather than try and incorporate the remainder of these few months in this budget.
That makes good sense, I'm sure.
I'll make the motion to approve the reassignment of 911 and Special Projects Offices to the Roden Bridge Department, and, that's the new FY, the new FY?
Okay, is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion is second to reassign in accordance with the agenda. The project off, Special Projects Office to Roden Bridge Department and the affected date, and the affected date part of the motion is of the new budget year beginning October first, I believe. Would that be right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And is there any discussion on the motion?
I would only comment that Dale has been working with the 911 people at ACOG, trying to get some irregularities straightened out. He's been working with them, ready to help us, so I think it's a proper thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Any other comments, discussion from the court? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All voting for the motion, Jerry. Okay, moving on to Item Thirteen. Discuss approved/disapproved relocation options for the election storage building, including contractor cost, and David, that's yours, you want?
Yes, sir. I had mentioned that I thought perhaps that there might be a less-cost contractor to move the building whole, that we're going to have to relocate from between the courthouse to the back of this building. Finally, the contractor showed up yesterday, he looked at it, I did not get a price from him yet, he has assured me that he would give me a price and a date, so I don't know that we can take any action on it. He did indicate that we could, that he could move the building without the trailer being moved, that he can slide it in there past the trailer without having to, in case our trailer does not move and he's available sooner, that it could be done. Pete asked me to have him differentiate in his pricing with or without replacing the skirting around the building, and he is supposed to price it both ways, moved, we replace the skirting, moved, he replaces the skirting. I'm hoping that I have a response on this within the next few days, I'll say week or so. I know the fellow, it was Mr. Bell, William Bell, I think James knows him, has had some experience with him. As far as I know, my experience with him has been one of competency, I don't have any problems, I'm not aware of any problems, so it's in the process, but we really don't have enough information at this immediate moment to make a rational decision.
All right. If you'll keep us informed, and when we're ready. Anybody have any other comments or questions, Bill?
I'll continue to try and keep a little fire under Mr. Bell, so he'll give us some information back.
Okay, good. Okay, Item Fourteen. On the agenda, discuss approved/disapproved items necessary to set up election storage building, including electrical skirting ramps and electrical bid from local contractor, and feature the author of that, Phil, assume.
All right, I had, I've talked to Kirby Hartner, who does quite a bit of electrical work for the county, and he gave a price of eighteen hundred dollars to connect into this facility out here, the air conditioning facility, and galvanized conduit to the exit slabs and go underground, PVC to the location of the building, eighteen hundred dollars is the price of that.
And that includes skirting the ramps?
No, no, that's just electrical. That's only electrical.
We're gonna live more than one contractor, is it?
And as far as if, if the moving contractor isn't satisfactory on the skirting, we'll see what remains, if it's done or wouldn't get done otherwise, compare it, whatever.
I don't think we'll live part of it without having it all really lived, but I'm willing to go forward and see where we end up.
So, we really can't decide on this until we get the building moved.
Right. Then, do you, Pete, do you think this, and I'm not questioning, I think Kirby does a good job at a reasonable price, but you think this is an acceptable amount for the amount of work and everything involved in it?
I think so.
James, you have some experience also.
Yes, sir. This is a reasonable amount, for what the job that he's gonna do, and what he's gonna do, this is a good price.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Any other comments or questions, discussion? And we've got a, have we got a motion to? No.
We don't have anything.
Let's, let's don't take any action until we get them. We'll put this on the next agenda. Hopefully be ready at that time. Item fifteen, on the agenda, discuss approved disproved installation of fence at the new jail location with updated bid from Texas Quality Fence. Pete, that's yours.
All right, we, I called the fence contractor, Mike, I don't know if he works. Anyway, he, he sent us an updated sheet needed yesterday, seven-twenty-eight, still good for ten days on putting the fence at their property, eight thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents.
It stayed the same?
Same, same amount. We have that, and each of you have a, probably have a copy in your thing of, we're discussing a merger meeting, March twelfth, two thousand thirteen, that states here, item ten on that in your agenda says, ten-foot buffer of natural vegetation or agreed on landscaping east-southeast property line, ten-foot buffer of natural vegetation or agreed amount landscaping on the west property line at the entrance drive. Any future fencing or replacement must be on property line. Criteria was set in brief form before that's obviously needed.
All right.
We have our, it's in here, very quick, here, probably.
Proposed cost again, Pete, was eight thousand five hundred?
Twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty.
Twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah. And that's for the whole fence, not for just a piece of it?
That's for a triangle fence, triangular fence.
So, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're gonna rip down all the property on that side of my property, is what you're saying?
No, sir. They're gonna try to get the fence in there, leave as much shrubbery as possible.
No.
I don't think there's any, any indication or any idea of ripping out anything that's yours, if that's what you're asking. And the fence line is actually going to be set back from the property line so that there will not be a trespass on your property, is my understanding. Do you have a different understanding?
Well, when this all began, I was told that there wasn't gonna be an impact on my property, and they drove a bulldozer right through my backyard.
And, and what, I'm sorry?
They drove a bulldozer through my yard.
Okay.
That's why this, this whole agreement came to be, 'cause the, they drove a bulldozer through my yard.
Who, who drove a bulldozer through your yard?
The Roden Bridge people.
Does anybody on the court have any knowledge of that?
He was there when it happened, yeah.
Who was?
Mr. Yawar.
I was, I was there, I wasn't there when it happened. I was there shortly after, but Jeffrey Rafter said through there to clean some of the trees up on the property, and he hit the back corner of his property and knocked a tree down. We put a post in right on the corner.
Took forty feet of fence, that's not a real thing.
Sir?
Took forty feet of the fence off, oh.
We repaired the fence and replaced the fence there that's been up for five years on it. Anyway, I'll make one statement here, that it says, any future fencing or replacement must be on property line, so that fence will be right on your property line, as soon as we can put it down there. But the vegetation will be left as much as possible, not gonna destroy the vegetation.
Okay. Once you put this fence up, what's your intent to deal with the shrubbery that's fenced in? The grass?
It'll be left to grow.
Because the last time, about three weeks ago, somebody drove a shredder through there, and I have cats in my backyard, and a week after they drove the shredder through and they threw dust everywhere, 'cause the shredder hit the ground, I had, I had five cats all had blood in noses. You know, when this whole thing started and they tore down that building, you told me that there, and I complained about the smell and the odor, you told me there was no environmental issues back there at all, and that I had nothing to worry about. And now the TEQC is conducting an investigation, and they've been doing it for over a year now, and I, I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything?
No, I haven't heard anything.
Who, who's responsible with TCQ for the investigation?
I have no idea.
Do you know?
I, I contacted them after, a, a year ago is when I contacted them, a year ago, May? Because after I complained to him about the smell and odor when they tore down the building, and that they needed to take care of the issue from underneath the building that they exposed, the smell and everything, and when they tore down all the buildings subsequent to that, they piled up all this debris behind my home and ran it through a shredder and let it blow into my yard, and he said I had nothing to worry about, and he, and, and, I had five dogs, okay? Exactly one year ago in May, three of my dogs passed away, all from similar symptoms, severe respiratory distress. And one of them, I, I took and they did x-rays, and he had all sorts of tumors in his lungs, and that's when I called the TEQC, 'cause, you know, I was told, I, there was no environmental issues behind my home.
Mr. Malloy, how is it that these issues have occurred since the county took over the property? They existed long before the county took over the property, but there didn't seem to be-
The county disturbed the soil and didn't do anything about, they, they just let it all blow into my yard.
I'm not sure-
There was no, there was no effort, there was no effort to keep any kind of whatever poison or whatever kind of contamination that was on that property to keep it from blowing into my yard, when they took backhoes and bulldozers and tore down buildings that were storage buildings that contained hazardous materials, and they just let it blow into my yard.
I know. Nobody with the county has much control over the wind blowing, I don't think.
You have the responsibility to make sure that when you impact property, that you, that you make sure that you don't poison other people's property and other people, other people, don't you?
I would say the same thing again that I just said, and the fact that the, if, if there's any contamination down there, I suspect it's been there for many, many, many years since the arch again-
Then why is it I've lived there for fifteen years and-
I don't know why you have. I don't have any idea.
Ma'am, you have something to say?
Yeah, Mr. Malloy, the issue with the contamination, the Texas Commission Environmental Quality Act, has all been brought up in the past, and you've addressed that with the court, I think numerous times, with my understanding, and we're here today talking about the installation of fence, which has not been installed yet. We can't go back to these past issues. I think it's already been resolved.
No, it hasn't.
Maybe not in your mind, but as far as, listen, listen, hold up, listen. As far as hearing from the Environmental Quality Commission, you need to contact them, because we're not responsible for them getting in touch with you. We don't run that, we're not that agency, okay? We're here talking about the installation of a fence, and it hasn't been put up yet, so we don't know what kind of impact it's gonna have on, you're talking about shrubbery, but Commissioner Yawar just stated that it's not gonna be on your property line, and we're gonna make sure of that.
My only concern is, when they disturb the soil, are they gonna move more contamination into my yard again, that's all?
Mr. Malloy, I've talked with TCQ. They have no problem with us putting a fence in that area.
Okay, they told me if anybody-
I've talked to Joel Anderson in San Antonio, who was their, they're, he's in charge that off, works for Low Cameron, Low Cameron, and he said that they had no problem with us putting the fence in. Yes, the committee in Austin is still reviewing that property, but no decision has been made, and he didn't see anything forthcoming, and he said we could put the fence in anytime we wanted to.
Mr. Yawar, do you have?
Yes, sir. My memory serves me right, this discussion was held at the last legislature's committee, went on for over an hour, and it resolved that we're gonna put the fence in, and I will rehash the same old stuff with a different date on it, that we need to move on, and I'm sorry that he, he's gonna have some impact. That's just, you know, that's just part of life in a, in a small city. I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do. But the other side of that is, he offers, I mean, he continues to come in here with a problem, and I appreciate and recognize that, but he has no solution, you know? First, he wants a fence, he wants to be separated, now he doesn't.
I never asked for a fence.
I'm glad we go ahead and build a fence for eight thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents.
I second.
Further discussion from the court? All in favor of the motion, signify or raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carry. Mr. Yawar, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't ignoring you.
That's fine.
Okay, we're on, for Dale, seventy, seventy. Discuss approved disproved list of class-one roadways in the county, attached lists as total roadways recommended after public input. I don't, I don't, wait a minute, Dale, I don't have a list. I would like to have one. I haven't found it yet at the end of it.
Dale, while there, Dave, I noticed on your list, I think we paved one-eleven, did we not, and it was not on the, the list. It's a little short.
Remember, this list is not all paved roadways.
I understand, but I, I think one-eleven was paved and already, and it's not on the list, we could throw it into that category.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. Class-one roadways are not necessarily all of the roadways that have been paved as of today by the county.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
There are more paved roadways out there. You're correct. There are paved roadways out there.
That are not class ones?
Not class-one roadways.
Okay, well, that's, I noticed that one, because there was some issue about, and this precedes you, but issue that it was paved for no apparent reason when it's three-quarter of a mile long, and it looked like there might have been some reason for it beyond utilization.
Well, you know, three-quarters of a mile long would not put it into the classification of a class-one thoroughfare, so that's why there are quite a few of them out there that have been paved and paid in the past, but are not on this list.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought this included all of the paved roadways.
No, no. And as you remember, last month, we began talking about the class-one thoroughfares here in the county, as to where the, the major roadways were and trying to get them classified. I had a list of roadways that I brought to you. They are marked in blue on the map that's here. Then on, I believe, the twenty-fourth of last month, we had a public meeting where the public had the opportunity to add roads that they felt were thoroughfares to this map. They're the ones that are indicated on yellow. Now, on your list, and I think most of y'all probably have just a black and white list, so there are actually two parts to this list. The first part is the list of roadways that I had submitted. Then if you go to the second page, about halfway down, County Road one-twenty-four, from there to the end of the list, those are roadways that the public recommended to be added to the list of class-one thoroughfares. Okay, and there is one-
There's one-twenty-four, go with the first group or the second group?
No, it's the second group. It's the beginning, no, I'm sorry. That is the last of the first group. Okay, so starting off with one, County Road one-sixty-three and below, those are the public road, or the public's added roadways. Now, Commissioner Yawar pointed out one error that I had on that list, and it is County Road one-twenty-four. We have no State Highway seven, seventy, seventy-seven in the county. That is County Road seventy-two. So the limits of County Road one-twenty-four would be from State Highway seventy-two to County Road one-thirty-four. The other thing that I want to, to point out, there to the right of County Road one-twenty-four in the bolded numbers, you see one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-point-six-four M, that is one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-point-six-four miles, that is the total length of that first group. The number that is in parentheses, eighty-four-point-six-eight miles, that is the quantity of those one-hundred-and-twenty-seven that are currently paved. So the difference is unpaid roadways. Likewise, at the very end of the, of the list, there to the right of County Road one-thirteen, the first number is fifty miles, fifty-point-six-nine miles, that is-
I was still working on the first part, so.
Okay, there at the very end of the list, the first number, fifty-point-six-nine miles, that is again the additional total mileage that was added with the public roadways. The one in parentheses, six-point-five-one miles, is the quantity of that fifty that is currently paid. So again, the difference between the two of those are what is unpaid.
One question, Dale. On page one, the fifth item from the bottom is County Road two-eleven, and on page two, the second item from the top is County Road two-eleven.
And that? Are you on it?
On the second page, the second item is County Road two-eleven.
Okay.
And on the first page, the fifth item from the bottom is County Road two-eleven.
Okay.
What, why is there a difference in mileage on those two numbers?
Because I think it's additional.
It's nine-hundreds of a mile, I'm not big to help, I'm curious.
There are a couple of these. I'm not sure, but where is two of them?
It's a paper?
Yeah. Here, with them all.
That's her fault.
Well, it looks like it's doubled on this listing.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, if it added, inadvertently added to the mileage. Yeah, that's what I wanted, if it's added, inadvertently added to the mileages.
Now, where did you say that it was listed again?
On the second page, the second item.
Second page from the top.
Second page, right, second two.
Okay, yes, it's, it's a duplicate. That, that can be.
It's got different mileage, but it's the same.
Correct, it's the same, it's just rounded off. The origin for the one was six point nine-one and seven miles, so it's rounded off, but that is a duplicate.
So, then is the total mileage correct or is, do we need to subtract seven miles?
Um, probably need to subtract seven miles out of that, so we're looking at subtracting seven miles out of, out of each one of those. There are some other duplicates, uh, the one you might notice, up the, up the 218, originally I had the section of roadway from, uh, 219 down to 181, but it makes sense to, uh, carry 219 from, 218, from FM-81 all the way to 181. So, you're going to see that section in both the original and the public edition.
I'm getting more confused by the minute.
Once this, once, if y'all approve this today, I will put this into one list. It will be total mileage.
Put it in one list and present it to us for approval. Have the list correct.
A couple of, just.
We meet, we meet again this month, not this morning, early next month.
All right, I'll put it together and have it for the next meeting.
Let's, let's have the correct thing approved, I think, since then.
Just a couple of announcements, a couple of issues to make you aware of. One, the first of the week, we did open up 389 over Silbo Creek. It had been closed for a little over two months due to water over that bridge. We cleaned the brush out of the one opening of that structure. The water did go down enough to where we could inspect the, the bridge. Uh, there's minor damage to it, but it was not to the point to where we could, we needed to keep it closed, so it is now open to the public again. Um, also, last meeting, we discussed the, uh, advertising for bids of the striking of some of the seal-coated roadways here in the county. Jeff Chapman has reviewed the contract documents and all, we've got those written, ready to go and I sent, uh, Lawana a copy of the paper announcement, the bid announcement to be put in the paper. We'll be looking to have that in the paper for the next two weeks where we will be, uh, receiving those bids the Monday prior to our August 31st court meeting. So, on August 26th, we'll be receiving those bids and open them in the court meeting on the 31st.
I think Mr. Yoder has something for us.
Yes, sir, I would like to, I, I was not that mean, I'm asking the question, what is the purpose of Class Five roads, regardless of category? What's the purpose of this effort? I don't understand. What does it do for us?
It will give us an idea of where the major thoroughfares are and, and will also then eventually set the conditions that those roadways will be expected to be in.
That doesn't explain anything.
That's my explanation is why we're doing it. That's the reason we're doing it, is so that we will have a definition of the major roads in the county that will then have the conditions that those roadways will be maintained in.
What does it, what is, that doesn't tell me what the purpose of the classification is. I mean, what are we getting, what are we doing, putting this, I'm not saying it's a bad effort, I'm saying what's the purpose of the effort? Is it going to say, these roads are going to be, uh, chip sealed or, uh, put material down and make hay the roads? What does it mean? You're not explaining what this, this effort, the purpose of, yeah.
It will be our highest class roadways with, which the court then will set up the classification as to what they want those roadways to be maintained in.
At some point, Dale, you gave the court, um, more or less some generalized specifications and, uh, they could, as I recall, and if I'm wrong on this, you correct me, but they would be those that were maintained in the high, at the highest level. They would probably, they would not necessarily all be chip sealed, but they would have some priority in terms of, uh, materials and, and such have, um, repair, et cetera. In other words, these would be the, as he mentioned, major thoroughfare and would receive, and I don't want to shortchange anybody who doesn't live on one, but they would receive the, a major portion of the consideration as far as repair and maintenance goes, if I understand perfectly.
Correct. With the limited funds that we're going to have this next year, this will set up the,
a priority.
The priority as to where, where we will be working and more likely they will, Class Ones will be chip sealed, so that gives us our classification. It won't be hit and miss anymore as to where the chip seals are. We'll follow those priorities.
Are the classes, um, shown as such because of the vehicular use of those roads?
Usually it's the volume of, of traffic that's on them along with the routes, where they go. Your major thoroughfares are your longer roadways that get you the furthest across the county.
Are you putting people out to measure the use, the vehicular use of the roads?
No, we're not going to that extent.
So, it's a guess?
It's a visual.
And who's complaining the most?
It's, it's a visual inspection as to, on our part, as to where the traffic is, is at. We're reviewing the map as to where the most direct roadways are getting from point A to point B.
And, and the amount of complaints that you receive in your office?
We haven't, we haven't used.
You don't use that at all?
No, I have not used that to set up this classification, though. We track those, but, but it's, it has not been a criteria for this Class One category.
Would you prepare and present to the court or, or bring it to my office and I'll get it to everybody, showing how you, what you use to classify the various roads as Class One and Class Two and Class Three?
Well, the Class One is just the longest, most direct routes through the, through the county.
Is there a minimum, is there a minimum and maximum, maximum distance?
No.
That fits into that?
No.
I, I don't really understand what criteria you use. Maybe I'm just pretty dumb about roads. I've only lived on country roads my whole life. I'm eighty years old.
Dale, this is, I'll have a question of some sort.
I, I just asked, the first time we discussed it, what, just letting Judge long, what was the criteria? What was the, the standard, the, you know, the definition that could put it into that?
There should be something, it seems to me. Perhaps, I don't know.
I remember seeing something, but it was not, it started to say well-defined. It was not, um, specific. I mean, it, it was a general definition, but go ahead, I'm sorry, Dale.
I mean, that's, I don't know how to make it specific in order to go through and with the limited resources we have. We can go through, do traffic counts on every one of them, but that's going to be expensive to do and I think you can, I mean, the public looked at the map, I've looked at the map, you can tell where the thoroughfares, where the, the longest routes, the most direct routes through the county are and those are the ones that are on the list.
The commissioners and the public did have an opportunity to participate and indicate which ones they felt in addition or deletion, as the case may be. Don't think anybody deleted, anybody added some. While we're on that, and I'm not trying to get off the subject, I'm misunderstanding, but is there still an opportunity? I, I know there's always an opportunity. There's one in Precinct Four that I've thought about, as I was, I took my map home with me last night and went over these, kind of, and I added the ones that I had and I had some of them in there, didn't have all of them. Excuse me. And what I'm fixing to mention is 104 to the conjunction with 103 and 103 to the Goliad County line is another one of those and it meets Goliad County, which is paved. I think, isn't Chicken Creek Road paved? I believe it is and, and that also has a fair amount of traffic on it. Now, now, if it can't be done now, I realize that this year is not going to be a year to, the wish list can be too big, but I just have to notice that one as a possibility. Outside of that, in the area that I'm familiar with, I thought everything was pretty well-covered.
Yeah, and once the, the list is approved, as you say, it can always be modified as traffic adjusts through the county. Okay, so it, it's not a.
I'm curious, does anybody come to your office to talk to you about that sort of thing, about the roadway criteria?
Conditions, not necessarily criteria, but conditions of the roadway. We have people in all the time.
Well, I'm sure of that, but whether it should be a Class One or Two or Three, they don't talk about that.
I haven't had anybody in the office discussing that yet, other than possibly Shelby or one of the other commissioners.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm still confused. I don't, I mean, if this has got a useful purpose, I'm all for it. I have no objection, but you have not been able to define the purpose of the effort. What, where are we going with it? What's the plan? What's, what are you going to use the information for? I mean, just develop information for its own sake is not, is not useful.
It will set out the, the highest classification of roadways that will give the citizens of this county an idea of where their funds are going to be spent for seal codes if there's nothing else. Okay, I've understood from multiple meetings here that I've attended and from discussions of past history that there's no rhyme or reason of seal coating in this county. This is the first step, that seal coating will be classified now.
Then why don't we say that? Why don't you say that? And right now, this means, if I give this to five people, any, before this meeting, and ask them to explain what that means, no one can give me an answer.
As of today, the court has not taken action on this and therefore it is not being used for that yet.
What are they taking action on?
Well, as the judge says, they're not taking action on anything until it's re-presented.
I would ask the court to see if we can define this a little more and just to find out what the purpose of the effort is.
Mr. Yoder, we will make a decision on it and it'll be the best one that, with the information we can get that we use to make such a decision and that'll be what we do with every decision.
Thank you.
Anything else from you?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, Dale.
Item eighteen on the agenda. Discuss approved, disapproved, delay and implementation date of the new plan of operation for the Citizens' collection station, uh, approved at July the twelfth meeting and designated responsibility for the plan implementation and that's on every meeting. We need to look into that further. I spent about three hours out there one day this week and, uh, I think that we're making progress on that, but I'm not ready to say that we have a plan that's what we ought to use from now on and I think so the other court has been out there, Shelby, you've been out, I know with James, you've been out, I know, and maybe everybody, yeah.
All this story, Judge, was, uh, we had this big trash pile out there, we got all that picked up, that's cleaned up. Uh, last commissioner's court meeting, I submitted some recommendations that were just my thoughts because I was out doing, I was a trash police out there, I guess, and I was doing everything, you know, trying to get that all picked up. So, I made some recommendations and, uh, uh, and that was just recommendation. James at a previous meeting had, had made a motion that all the commissioners would be part of that facility and so, you know, I don't know how many have gone out there rather than maybe James, but, uh, I've been spending a lot of time out there and we got, you know, we, we made a lot of progress and I think it, it looks a lot better than it has in a long time. Uh, I know James has been, been checking it out. And then, uh, as Dale said, he's making, the signs are being made at this time. Uh, this week, I looked at some of those signs, they were getting close and they were going, they had to do a dig test and everything else to put the folds in the ground and all that stuff, then they go mount the signs. But, you know, there's a lot of questions, a lot of people are, you know, still, as Joe said, they're still, they're, they're wanting to know when they can go, when they can't go and, and, uh, I know that the, since we've been operating that thing, you know, pretty much every day, that, uh, there's a lot of people have been bringing furniture and all kind of stuff. Some people have taken upon themselves just to toast up on the, outside on the city road and, uh, tires and mattresses and just, just sleeping there on a, on a day that we're closed. And then we come out, pick it up and, and dump it in. Some people have come in there and expect everybody to unload the trucks for them and, uh, you know, we, we're not going to injure our employees, some of this real heavy stuff, they can figure out ways to do that. We, we assist them much as we can and I know Russell's been taking all kind of verbal abuse from people because they want better services or what have you. Uh, but I, I, I would like for us to go ahead and continue what we're doing, or at least running on a limited schedule till October one, as we're going to do everything when the budget takes over. Get, I don't know what the Budget Committee has decided on any of this stuff too, on how the commit, how that thing's going to be run. And then when we do make a decision, the court, either we need to, either the judge or somebody go there and, and explain to the people there what's going to take, what's going to take place. It's not what I, what I recommend is going to take place, but I don't, you know, we need to have an, an official, uh, I guess, explanation of what happens to those people there or what happens with that facility, not just, is not, as I've been told by people in the community out here, tell it's your junkyard, when it's not my junkyard, it's the county's junkyard.
Well, when you refer to people, are you referring to the employees there or who are you referring?
Well, the, the sin, the employees there as well as the citizens in the community, the guys that are working there, because if you're going to end up making a job change here, somebody has to tell those people and they have to be told in a proper way. He is, I can't, I don't have the authority to do that. It's the court's.
So, tell them what, Shelby?
That we may have to shut one of them down. We may be changing the hours. We may do a reduction in pay there. I don't know what the Budget Committee's doing. There's a lot of, lot of further discussion that we need to take.
Well, I thought the decision had already been made to, to reduce the hours.
Yeah, I think, I think what, I think what happened, and I talked to Shawnet, Commissioner Dubick about it, he presented that paper to us that day and then I guess there was an accident with an eighteen wheeler and he had to leave. So, he wasn't here to actually explain it to us. We took it upon ourselves and we voted on it and when I talked to Commissioner Dubick, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, he said that he wanted a more like presentation to us and then for us to go over it and maybe put it on the next meeting, another meeting and vote on it. But we, we went ahead and took it upon ourselves and we voted on it then and he didn't actually want it for August the first, well, not him want it, but he wanted, his recommendation would be for the new FY. We took it upon ourselves. We took it upon ourselves, and we pushed it to August the first. We hurried it up, but nobody had talked to the employees out there or anything like that. So I think that the direction that Commissioner Dubic had was just to present it to us and go over it, but since he left, we pushed it through. Is that correct?
That's, that's what happened. And if the court...
Might have been a mistake of Commissioner's.
And if the court wants to continue what y'all passed, that's fine. But somebody needs to explain to those employees out there exactly what's going to transpire, because there's, there's too many different stories going out there, and nobody has actually officially told these employees out there what we're going to do.
How many employees are you...
There's two.
Two.
Full-time or part-time?
But, you know, but...
I don't think that'd be a problem.
No.
That's Rich Russell and somebody else? Anybody else here?
Yeah. I mean, but, but I don't know how y'all deal with employees, but whenever I had them, I wanted them to know exactly what's, what's transpiring before we make any type of change. And that's, that's me. If you want to, but again, it's like what Orange County does, too. You flip the light switch on and off, and we'll, we'll, folks make the change. Well, the changes don't always work that fast unless you don't really plan out to implement that change. And that's, that's where I'm going. We, nobody's really, I don't think we've implemented a plan of how we're going to go into another reduction in force over there, or whatever we plan to do. Now, the, my recommendations, what I've submitted were strictly recommendations, and, and that's the way it was. But if the court agreed on that, that's fine, and somebody needs, then we need to bring those employees in, have a discussion with them, tell them this is what's going to happen. The public needs to be put on notice, these are the hours we're going to run the, run the facility. If it's a half a day on Tuesday in the morning, and a half a day in the afternoon on a Thursday and Saturday, whatever the case may be, then that's what it'll be. But the public needs to know the hours of the operation, what we're going to accept, what fees we're going to charge, and, and the whole nine yards. We just can't flip the switch and say, okay, we're going to another gear without actually implementing a change of a plan. And that's me. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but that's, again, it's not Shelby's junkyard, it's the county's junkyard.
Do you want to just postpone this?
Anybody on the court go out there this week, spend any time?
What, me, sir?
I spent three hours out there one morning, just so you'll know. And I'm not talking ever from hearsay or anything, other than being out there talking to the people working. But it would be a fine idea. At one time, James was kind of the chief of that out there, and asked that, that the whole, whole court be involved, and it's a problem for the whole court. And all of us need to go out there and spend some time, talk to the people that work out there, and...
I spent time with him on the phone, probably about forty-five minutes, three or four different calls with Russell, but I did not go out there. But I did spend time with him this week on the phone.
It's like out there, we're going to be needing, eventually, when Daley started cleaning out ditches or whatever you're going to do, if you have like topsoil or sediment you're going to get rid of, we're going to be needing some of that out there to start establishing a cap over some of that, over some of that stuff. So, you know, there's a lot of planning yet that still has to be done out there. The trash is, the, the big, I saw it's been cleaned up. It's just, we need to now to...
But, but that does not stop the local citizens from running out there and throwing.
No.
And, and I would call it a bad name.
And, and, but, you know, too, but when it's been open, I think it's, I've heard comments from the public that they've noticed that the roads aren't as, as trashy as they used to be, and the county people aren't dumping so much on the deal. And I know Dale's had some guys picking up trash, they have a trash patrol, they've been picking stuff up, so we're, we're making a lot of headway, but again, you know, it's what the court's...
Couldn't change overnight.
Just whenever y'all decide what your format is, or your hours, or whatever, I might suggest that maybe we could on the county website, I don't know if anything on there right now, but I noticed from while I was looking at other counties, what they did, Wilson, Goliad, DeWitt, the hours were posted on the website as well as the fees, so that Mr. Baker, before he drives out there, what have you, they know, you know, what to expect.
Exactly, and I'd like, I'd like it also to be put in the paper, have like a weekly thing that says, you know, city, county, county offices, these are the hours, the dump site, everything listed where it sits, people can look at it and see.
Right, so they just know what to expect, they might not make that trip, and they can look on there, pull it up, and see that it's closed.
Exactly.
That's true.
So that there won't, won't be any misconception, Mr. Baker's no longer with the paper. And, I mean, that doesn't keep him from having access to the media.
And it's like, like Joe called me that one day, and he said, I can't break my furniture up, put it into a bag, somebody told him that out there. I said, no. Only thing we want in bags is loose household trash. If you have a lot of loose trash, if it's something you can put in a bag and dispose of one big time, that's fine. Furniture, mattresses, big items like that, we're gonna, you know, we'll, we'll take, like we can take and dispose of. In November, we're going to have a hazardous household cleanup again at the Showborn, so we'll be able to take electrical stuff, and tires, and, and other stuff that people want to bring. But it's just a, you know, we just, again...
I just noticed on some other of the counties, they actually, some of them itemized tires, a bag of trash, the rodent refrigerator, I mean, they would actually put the price on there, so if it was fifty dollars to dump your refrigerator, or if y'all might not even take that, the, the citizen could decide, I don't want to pay that, you know, it was posted very clear, and, you know...
And that's kind of basically the, the plan we're trying to follow.
Drop it off on the side of the road all the way out.
And that's, and those are comments that some people have made, well, I don't want to pay this, I'll go take it, dump it on the road. And I tell Russell, you know, Russell, when you, some, if someone makes a comment like that, write the license plate number down, and then if we find a refrigerator laying on the road, we can turn that over to the sheriff department, they can do an appropriate investigation, if anything happens, you know, we can, we can do that. There's ways to do all this, but we got to communicate to the public first what our total intent is.
Well, even as the hours are posted now, as the operational hours, someone needs to be there. There was a day and a half last week that no staff was there during hours that it was supposed to be open.
Exactly, somebody told somebody they, they had to burn PTO.
Well, I understood that the commissioners were going to fill in when both of the employees couldn't be out there, and I'm not sure what...
And I, and I've told Russell that, I said, you need to take off, if both y'all need to be off, call me. I will come over there and sit there and be the trash police that day.
But you remember during our policy committee meeting the other day, we talked about the use of PTO just to burn it, so that they get paid for anything else that's on the books at the time of the project.
And I just noticed Tobias, Tobias, the thing she submitted to us, that I've got some questions already.
Mr. Baker, do you have...
Can I ask two questions? The two employees that work out there, who is their supervisor, and what department are they under?
They're under the commissioner's court. As a whole, really.
That's another recommendation, too, is that that department needs to have a full-time supervisor. We're going to do that to prove their time, do all this stuff, so we may have to do a reorganization, or maybe like we did with, with nine-one-one, assign that to a certain department, maybe to Renee or something.
The supervisor, the actual supervisor out there is the gentleman that's out there. We may have a supervisor out there, he just has to answer to Commissioner's Court as well. Okay, Commissioner Dubic, so we voted on for August the first, but do you want to go ahead and re-vote to move it to October the first for the new FY, like...
That was, that was my, that was my total intent to start with, was for, at the fiscal year, you know, we could still run it, like the hours that are posted there, and that was before, but when the, when the fiscal year would take over, we would have a change in maybe employee personnel there, or...
Because there's just too much left there to shut them down.
Little minor stuff to do, plus, we need to go over there and look at all the equipment there that we can declare surplus or change over. But the court, if you haven't gone there to look, you need to go look. So I'm going to make a move that we go ahead and, and continue operating that facility till October one, or so the court ready can formalize the, that next fiscal year.
So operating at the hours currently?
Yeah.
Till the new FY.
Till the new FY.
Unless something else changes.
Something else changes.
And that'll trump the other ones. I'll say that.
Any other discussion?
Are you going to wait until implement, let me just say it back, say it a different way, that would leave, and if I understand this, that would do away with the implementation of any changes after the first, the, the beginning of the next fiscal year? Are you still anticipating those changes? In other words, the motion, the motion that passed was that the changes be made and made effective then. So if you, if you want to, I think, if you want to just change it, you would basically allow the original motion to stand and amend it from August first to October first, because that, that would leave the original motion with the proposal that you had presented, without having to visit it again, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, too, and then again, you have to see what the budget's going to say. Well, maybe the public may decide, hey, if you want that thing open more, I don't know, you know, you don't know. But my thing is currently, I want to go ahead and run it, the two days, like we're supposed to be doing now, is, is the way you currently had it changed, but till October one.
And then move it to the...
Move it to, as the court decides, they give us another month, or two months to look at it and, and to change.
If you want to leave me out there, call me, we'll go out there together, and maybe we could, we'll go over, I think the ideas you had are, are good, but maybe we can go through out there, if you want to spend some time out there with me.
Yeah.
Since I've been doing it for a few years, you've been doing it a while, too, so...
I think it's important to have the...
Do we need to have a workshop before we decide on the exact hours of operation?
Probably so.
Well, we can't wait two months to make that decision, because the budget has to be done appropriately.
I don't have, you know, the way, what, wait a minute, please, appropriately mean?
Fund it appropriately. If we're going to have it open with full-time employees, then we need to budget salaries for full-time employees, if we're going to have it part-time.
I'm not sure anybody's talking about having full-time employees, but...
Well, they just mentioned having it open full-time, so...
I was going to say, it's been brought up to change it. You know, if it left to me, I'd close it period, straight away, to get out of business.
But then all the trash is up on the side of the road, like there's lawns, just...
That's what happened.
Can you take it to your place?
I, I got plenty of room, but anyway, I understand that, but I'm not sure that we're gaining that much, anyway, but it's not my...
You know, there's, there's Wilson County, I think, contracts theirs out. DeWitt County kind of does a partial deal. It might be prudent, and we can look into it if you'd like, into how they operate theirs. And then you might have an idea of how some of these other counties work.
The Wilsons County contracted out yard, actually, the, the company takes care of the location, as well as the garbage collection, and it runs a little bit over eight thousand a year.
Tell me, where's the run yard?
Sir?
Easy.
And, and I mean, you know, when I look at ours, by the time you pay the employees, and, and, you know, all the perks and benefits, you know, you just kind of have to weigh that out and do your research.
We will work on it, and we're not going to stop it today.
The recommendations that I made would, would really give us considerable savings, I mean, what we, compared to what it was. But I want to at least get through them till October one, and get picked off.
Okay.
We don't need to take any further, have we got a motion? Motion in a second to do what?
Postpone the implementation until October one.
Until October one. Any further discussion? All right, I'll, you know, I'll leave there with the motion, signify the rating in right hand. All opposed, same sound, all voted for, motion taken. Okay, we're to item nineteen, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Present discuss the calculated twenty sixteen effective and rollback tax rates. Brenda, please, there you go.
Good save.
Wait a minute, let me ask you a question before you start. What's the difference in an adopted rate and an effective rate?
The adopted rate is what was decided on by the commissioner's court, the effective rate is the calculated rate. The adopted rate is what was, what was voted on and adopted by the court.
Calculated, and the calculated rate, your calculation?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, we calculated the tax rates on Wednesday, and as anticipated, they went up. The effective rate for two thousand sixteen is calculated is point four-four-one-two-five. Of that, point zero-one-seven-four-two is INS, and point oh-five-oh-seven-seven-four would be your Roden Bridge Special, which would leave an M and O rate of point three-seven-three-oh-five-one. The rollback rate calculated to point four-seven-three-oh-one-nine. Again, the same INS of point zero-one-seven-four-two, Roden Bridge Special, point zero-five-four-eight-three-five, which would leave an, an M and O rollback rate of point four-oh-seven-six-four. We did have a decrease in certified values of forty, a little over forty-two percent from last year.
Why is the fifteen rate different than the two years of interest in sinking?
You looking at the...
I'm looking at what you gave us.
Which one?
It says a painted and rollback tax rate comparison two thirteen, two oh-one-three, two oh-one-six, and I'm looking at two oh-fifteen, at the third item, which says interest in sinking, and two oh-one-five is zero-one-six-five-nine-three.
Mm-hmm.
And interest in sinking below point zero-one-six-six. Why is there a difference?
It's rounded up.
Why did you round up one figure out of the whole, well, you did that year? But why that year, well, you did, you did every other year, apparently? Why would you round up one year and not round up the next year?
We just did it to four digits, rounded it to four digits.
In alternate years, and in, in six digits, in alternate years, that doesn't make any sense to me. Not good.
Any questions?
I'm, I'm talking a question to you, that I...
It's just rounded up, Walter, it was just rounded, taken up to four digits instead of carried out to six digits.
Why do you do it every other year a different way? What my real question is, and it doesn't make sense to me, and it obviously does to you, and I would like to know how to make sense of it. Just do whatever you want to, you were elected, so you can do it any way you want to?
No, that's not true, Walter, you know that's not true. We just went, we carried out four digits instead of six that year. I, I don't know why I made that decision.
It's every other year is what I'm looking at, two years one way, two years another way, you know? And you've been the same officer for the, all four years there?
Yes, I have.
I would like to have the same number of digits every year.
No, I can change the spreadsheet. I just took that off of the, off the, off the paperwork.
Rollback rates, like, one cent higher than last year.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much. We appreciate it. Well, whether excited like it or not, I'm telling you, we appreciate it. And you can go tell all the voters that you don't agree with the court, and that's fine. Any questions, comments from the court? Item twenty on the agenda? Item twenty on the agenda. Discuss approve, disapprove approach in city, candidate city of Carm City for each entity funding one half of the salary and fringe of a dispatcher and one half of the salary and fringe of a jailer in the sheriff's department for fiscal year 2017. That's authored by me. And, uh, I haven't discussed it with anybody. Okay, the items that, that, uh, the auditors brought us is just showing the salary for dispatcher and fringe benefits is forty-five thousand, a hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents, and a jailer's salary is, uh, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents. And, uh, those are real figures as of now.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. For court information and public dissemination.
This has been something that's been discussed multiple years during budget process, and the county does provide dispatching services for both city police departments, as well as booking services if anyone that's picked up and needs to be incarcerated.
Sheriff, has anybody talked to you about this?
I called the surrounding counties, and the only with stock our guy is from Sheriff Tackett. But how they're doing it in Wilson County is, uh, for Laverne, they're charging them three thousand a year. For Florisville, it's, uh, six hundred a month. For Stockdale, they're doing two hundred a month. And on, uh, Poe, he didn't have a figure for that, and Eagle Creek, but I don't think Eagle Creek's, it's just small.
Sheriff, on Poe, we charged three thousand, they haven't paid us the last couple of years since we built them.
Okay. Why don't y'all sue? I understand, of course, why you don't, but.
Right. Judge Long, I'm going to, to their council meeting, Sheriff, I hooked it, it just says not in their budget. They don't want to raise taxes to their citizens, definitely provide dispatch services to them.
Well, and, and we may, say, Poe, of course. But, but we will all, I was just gonna say, we will all be working on it, I can assure you.
I've been through this a few times, whenever this comes up, it's, it's, it's hit the foot before. We go through it, we do a little talking, and we talk back and forth, and it always comes out that we just leave it as a wash. I mean, that's what we've always done, just, we don't bill them, they don't, I believe some of them supply the fire department, I think Kennedy and Cork City have the fire department, Corks County doesn't have a fire department. I know we put some into it, I'm not sure exactly what the numbers are, but I know they help us when we have fires out there in the county. I don't know the exact numbers, the calculation of the exact number, who's taking or giving one dollar more or one cent more, but I do know that it's been in the past, thrown on, on the court here, and it's always just been left alone.
I, I see the city manager here from Cork City, you wanna add anything to our discussion?
Here is a monitor's access of the council report back what the discussion was, so, but they only had knowledge of it on Tuesday night, I get a copy of the agenda and presented that to them, and I was just directed to come and read it back.
Well, just, just express our concern, that we're concerned about these items, and are not any that anybody particularly, but we'll be in, we'll be in conversation with everybody involved as we proceed along in this thing. And that doesn't make it any more palatable to anybody.
Well, I think the council will open, representative from the county can explain that.
Well, we'll see what we can work out. If I can get anybody that's got courage enough to face up to them, well, I'm scared of them.
When is the next council meeting done?
Uh, will be the fourth Tuesday.
I miss.
Is that when y'all meet every month, the fourth Tuesday? Okay. We'll, we'll get somebody there. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you being here.
Well, appreciate the heads up because we are in budget process.
Yeah. And it's a time when everybody's got to be looking, and looking right now, not at the end of September or something, that's. We, we pay a, we're on, we disperse a quarterly rural fire tax payment to the cities?
Rural Fire or E S D Emergency Services District is a taxing entity on it, on its own, we act as a fiscal agent for that.
Okay. It's not county dollars, it's their own.
It's their own.
Their own dollars supposedly. Um, to pick on our visitor from the north today, have y'all tried, uh, a fee for service in terms of, uh, your incarcerated inmates from the city? A city brings in a prisoner, they pay a daily rate like anyone else?
Yes, sir, yes, they, I believe it's fifty dollars, well, not, they pay forty-five or fifty.
See, that, that might be another way to look at it, is, is, as far as I know, we do not bill the cities for their inmates, do we?
Well, no, we don't, but it's not, that's not as much as the cost and dispatching is, because every call that we dispatch for each one of the cities costs us time and personnel, which not every one of those results in someone being booked in jail.
I, I understand that on the dispatcher side, I was thinking more on the jailer's side of it, but, uh, a cleaner way of taking care of it might be a fee for service.
It's just a thought. Same thing with, we, you look at the same thing as the EMS.
Yeah.
Majority of the calls are within the cities inside. Uh, that, that, that takes a big, big toll too. Any other comments?
Postpone it for later. Postpone action for later. Just no action?
Just no action taken at this point. I would say, and put it on the agenda for the next meeting, Dean.
Don't need to secure dialogue with the city dean.
Yes. Yes. Is there anything further on this thing before we go on to the twenty-one? Uh, if not, we'll move on to item twenty-one on the agenda. Status of the budget planning for the fiscal year 2016, seventeen, and a timetable. My secretary has written me a note, said that I will neglect, tended to what needs tended to, thank goodness for good secretaries. Uh, and this is a report as much as anything, an update. Uh, the committee met yesterday to review the appraisal numbers and evaluate where we are in determining the final budget, and with the previous discussion with the tax assess collector on wages, we've reduced valuations of forty percent plus in property taxes with our, our initial, going through the budget process, forty percent's a, uh, pretty sizable cut, but that's what we're looking at, and I'm, I've warned everybody, and they've just kind of ignored me, and apparently think it's not gonna happen. But I assure the citizens and the people involved and the various governmental groups that it is going to happen, and, uh, we're budget conscious and will continue to be. Uh, we've, we're making additional, we're going to be making additional adjustments, and it would behoove everybody to make sure you know when we're meeting, and, uh, if you have something to say, come say it to us, because, uh, the bottom line of budgets are gonna be adjusted, and, and something that we can handle, and I'm, I'm a, a great believer in that, and if you don't like it, you can fuss at me all you want to, but be nice to it when you're fussing, be nice to me. I don't do well with ugly fussing. Uh, we're waiting for some numbers from, uh, our insurance carrier to finalize our premiums, and I've talked to them, and told them if they can't get these figures to us on time for us to get an early budget jump on this thing, that we're gonna start looking for better insurance carriers, and I don't mind threatening anybody. Jess has done a good job, has taken care of our insurance good, but when we need these numbers, we need them, and that's part of that job. The budget committee has scheduled some additional meetings, and they're going to begin on the afternoon of August the ninth, I think at one thirty, is that correct? And, uh, after Commissioner's Court that day, that's on the first Tuesday, I believe, of the month, which is our regular court day. And we're gonna meet daily that week, throughout the week, until we get a finalized proposed budget. And anybody that's got anything to say about that budget, I see the sheriff and the EMS folks and the district clerk and one of the JPs and treasurer, district, the, the chief deputy and everybody and our Road and Bridge man, everybody that's got something to say about the budget, better look at your figures again and pair them as well as you can, because, believe me, this committee is going to pair them down to where we need them to be. And if we have your input, it makes it work better, and if you just wanna sit back and let us do it, and then you can fuss and raise cane and, uh, say, well, that, butts didn't know what they were doing, that may be right, and I'm not scared of that at all. And, uh, we're going to do what we need to do with this budget to make this, uh, thing work as well as we can for all of the citizens of this county. So, with that said, uh, we've got plans to file the final budget on August thirty-first. We, we have that long to adjust and rehear and do whatever we need to do, but I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be set before August thirty-first, I'm the budget officer, and if I have to by myself set this, I assure you, I will, and I'm not, I'm not scared of the voters. I've been one longer than anybody in this room, I think, and, uh, I know about voting and grew up knowing about it over in East Texas, and those folks over there are a lot worse than y'all are here. You may not think so, but I know so. Uh, committee will be meeting again with the department heads one last time to make one quick round again. We met with all of them, uh, we're working hard, we're going to continue to, on, on the court, Commissioner Reynolds and I are, are on the budget committee, and, uh, so that they won't escape your wrath, the auditor also is at the county clerk. So, pick any of us you like to fuss with, and go speak your piece and say whatever you want to say, and if we're not looking at it fairly, we certainly will, but, uh, everybody's going to feel the pinch, not just the few. Okay. Anything else from any of the budget folks? Or, or?
I'd like to ask the budget committee, when y'all, next time y'all do meet, that y'all, that the committee, uh, I guess, communicate to other department heads that there's so many rumors that are being spelled out there now. Uh, I've heard everything from Road and Bridge being, going to thirty-six hours, and I've heard five percent across the board. I, I don't, you know, cuts, uh, I know the cuts are imminent, and that, that's fine, but just so we, again, communicate to our employees, so everybody's kinda on the same page, we gotta dispel any rumors, you know, just, some may have rumors out there, some may think that's what's gonna happen, I don't know, but you ask different employees, you see different employees that come up to me, or maybe they come up to you, and they all have different ideas, and it kinda, to me, after a while, makes it hard even running a party, because nobody seems to know what's going on, so I'm just, they're just a comment that I have made.
Anybody jumped on you as a Road and Bridge man?
I'm about three inches shorter than three months ago.
Well, uh, you're, you're blending in with the rest of us.
Now, the only thing I would request, if possible, is from the committee, if you have adjusted budgets from what we have given you, if you have adjusted those further, maybe make those available to us where we can review those before the next meeting, and, you know, to assist in the calculations or the discussions.
Well, we will have another discussion, at least one discussion with everybody that's involved, I think. But take a good look, y'all could take good looks at your budgets without the court telling you to do it, and all of you who are department heads and work with budgets need to look and, and look at non-essential items that can be reduced, because we're going to have to reduce them, and we intend to. And I'm, I'm the budget person, and I don't have to answer to anybody but the voters. Uh, I could not even have a committee if I choose to, but I've chosen to have, uh, Shelby and, uh.
Well, Tim, Tim.
Well, he is, because we talk to him every day. Mr. Reynolds and I are on the budget committee, and, uh, we try to keep everybody informed on the court, and don't do a good job always, I know. But at any rate, we're working on the budget, if you got anything to say about it, better come see some of us, and otherwise, don't bother me if you haven't come to talk to me about it. So with that said, anything else from the court? Let's see, we haven't paid bills yet, I've. I have twenty-two on the agenda as a payment of bills, or a total of the bills for payment. This is the official, no, that's not. This is the official, that has to be said. So if, if the court will take a few minutes and look through this, we haven't seen a We've got twelve pages of bills, and, uh, they total three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and six dollars and sixty-three cents from the month.
You will page, if you will page to turn, if you will turn to page ten, I will point out some items of interest.
Go ahead.
About halfway down, the total of twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents paid from the contingency fund, all that relates to outside counsel in regard to either this building, the jail facility, Road, not Road and Bridge issues, but other issues within the county, potential, uh, litigation that might be up and coming. The last item on that page, eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, that's for district quarter-pointed payments. On page eleven, the first payment, seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents is juvenile detention services. The next amount, twenty-one hundred, is for county court-appointed attorneys. Halfway down the page, you will see a payment of eleven thousand, four hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. That is capital outlay expenditure in this cycle for the jail facility. The fourth item from the bottom, three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents, that is prisoner medical care for current inmates. The next item, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, is prisoner detention costs. On page twelve, we are making a payment to the San Antonio Food Bank of thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents for the food bank, the mobile food pantries and the senior pantry. Road and Bridge bills this cycle include twenty-two thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty-six cents for fuel, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents in road materials. Contractors assistance, twelve thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Road signs, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents, and then the payment for equipment. two cents, and then the payment for equipment rental is a broom in the amount of nineteen hundred and fifty dollars. And as the judge stated earlier, the grand total is three hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and six dollars and sixty-three cents this cycle.
The charges for investigation from Paycon and Talax on N X two, is that going to be recoverable from the insurance?
Where is it?
I'm sorry, sir, it's on page two. Is that recoverable from our insurance carrier?
That will be recoverable from our insurance carrier. It may be recoverable from a defendant should any lawsuit transpire.
Okay, I was going to ask the same thing about Jeff's fees, but anyway, let's see what else we've got. When it comes to inmate medical, and I don't know if this is done or not, I noticed some in there, and maybe I should address the sheriff with this, do y'all just find a doctor? How do you determine who?
That medical bill that we've been having is the medication that we have to pay for our offenders, our custody that are under Camino Real's service.
Oh, okay.
I will tell you that we go that route through G O, through their prescription company, because going that route, we are saving four hundred and fifty dollars an hour if I go our way, because we're going to have to pay for a psychiatrist, if they need to see one. So that's why I'm going that route.
No, I'm not faulting, I just, really, the one thing I thought about, and it probably doesn't come up much, and I noticed it was a small bill, but was a dental bill.
Two hundred and ninety dollars for extractions.
Yeah, and I didn't know whether the county had a, what's Dave Ramsey call them, a select provider, someone who contracts with the county, or if it was just a take them to someone fee for service.
Right. We usually take them to care of Dr. Phil's.
I mean, I don't, I don't have an axe to grind with anyone, I just didn't know how it was done. Thank you, Sheriff.
He has, he has told y'all that he will do that sort of practice, Dr. Phil said.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes.
And all of them are not willing to. All dentists are not, or doctors are not.
I have always used him, I would go, Bill, and we could get him in there quicker and not four weeks later, versus...
Okay, that's good reason. Jail railroad encroachment, wasn't anything on the agenda today, but is there anything, does anyone know anything new on that? Has the survey been done? Is there, what's in the grinder?
I don't know.
No communication from Jeff or anything?
Problem.
Robert, you got an idea?
The survey has been completed, Commissioner, and I think they're drawing up the final numbers. They came out there and actually marked the spots. It appears, I think, in some previous discussion, that it was thinking that the Sally Fort would be in that encroachment, but it is not. So I have the good news to report, it's outside that Sally Fort, just part of the retaining wall is on their property, but the Sally Fort itself, the building itself is not. So if push can be shoved, and there wasn't another deal worked out, on that issue of the building itself is on the county property. So it would just be part of that retaining wall and the swell that's actually on that railroad property. Now, it's a different issue with the radio tower. The radio tower is entirely owned, that railroad right away, and it was placed there based on the previous pins. It is inside the pins, but those pins were erroneously put in place, so it was constructed and the tower was erected what we thought was county property, but it turns out it is not. So that tower would have to be moved if a deal wasn't worked out.
Okay, of course, that could be a charge back to the mistake of the architect and their surveyor also.
While we're on that issue, Commissioner, if y'all would look at the handout today, I think that Mary got from the architect, there's going to be a lot of discussion in the next coming few weeks about those issues. The engineers were there, and we've been dealing over the last two or three weeks with some major problems there, and I would like to bring to the court's attention that you guys need to get involved, because there are some major issues with the structure, and I'll let Lorraine and the lawyers and engineers get a hold of y'all, it'll probably be on the next agenda, but there are some major issues there. And I think Pete's been down there, and we talked about it and stuff, so I'm not sure this is the proper time to talk about it, but with the plumbing and with the retaining wall in the back, so...
No, I appreciate it, and I noticed that we made a payment, and that was, I was getting to that a little bit later, is to make sure that, I don't want to deny the people their money if it's due, but if there's still issues, we sure need to hold on.
I came to visit with Judge Almo over this weekend, brought some of that detention money. We'll let that come up in the next...
The retainage, and make sure we have enough to cover the thing. Thank you, appreciate it. I did find, and this goes a long distance, information for the court, I ran into one of the landowners in Rungy who has bought property from the railroad, and should we wind up buying that, we can probably research the deeds and see if they put any exclusions, easements, or anything on his. Although it was not the North-South Main Line, it was that Yocum to Rungy line, nevertheless, it was all from Union Pacific or whomever so. If they say, well, we won't, don't, can't, we can always look. Larry Dement, Larry Dement and the Masons have bought property from the railroad, so, and that's would be a matter of record right across Carroll's office, so...
They didn't build the tower.
They didn't build the tower.
Prior to...
We didn't build that, right? Okay.
Just to clarify one more thing, David, any payments made in relation to the new jail facility or to the Chapman firm for legal services, nothing is going to Hail Mills or to B S A this cycle?
Okay, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Sheriff, with reference to the inmate medicals, I read an article the other day that some county, maybe you heard it at the conference, that they had intake of offender, and he was indigent, but however, had severe medical issues that was going to cost this one county like ten to hundreds of thousands of dollars for, that possibly could happen?
Yes. But in a lot of those, if they're still pending as far as per sentencing, really, I mean, you can't get rid of them until they get sentenced. Once they get sentenced, if it's somebody that's required medication, and it's, you know, it's several of them, we can get them to T D C a quicker way, but we'll have to take them to Huntsville, which we've done that before. But if not, we'll have to hang on to them to the process.
I understand, too, that T D C has been kind of lazy of picking up inmates, not just in this county, but across the state. They're over the more, longer in county, county care than they should.
And we're getting a lot of rollovers from G O that have been their offenders that now are wanted somewhere else in State of Texas, or if they're wanted like in Utah, Ohio, we have to keep them a good thirty to ninety days before we can get them sent off.
And your outside detention that you have contracted are all those now in-house?
They're in-house, yes.
So that should slowly go away.
Yes, yes.
That is all going away. To clarify one more point, Commissioner, what the sheriff was saying, we use a voucher program through the county hospital. Otto Kaiser provides us with a voucher for regular normal medications for our inmate population. Those numbers that you're seeing right there are a specific target of inmates that have psychiatric problems, and a lot of those costs are based on those psych medicines, which are outrageous. But just to answer your question, normal prisoner medical care goes through a voucher program at Otto Kaiser, and they actually work that to the county's benefit.
Because they're qualified as indigent.
That's correct.
Hospital that you require.
And they'll usually cover three a month.
Yeah, three a month.
Three prescriptions.
So we send a huge amount of money through the county hospital system just on regular inmate care.
But I saw that article, and it just kind of, you know, made me, wow. We're one day closer.
Thank you. I, like I say, it was just a generic question, not an accusation or a put punch at you, I just didn't know how it functioned. Hold on, let me, I got one more question. I've always got another question, ain't you yet, knew yet. Dale, how are we coming along on our scheduling of bidding for next year's materials? I keep being distressed about buying these same things over and over and over again open without the bids. Are you, do you have them prepared or ready to be submitted to where they can be done and cleared before we start next budget year? Or what are we doing? I'm talking about fuel and materials and tires, contractor services, et cetera, et cetera.
Jeff is reviewing my purchase of services contract, and so I've got a contract in place with the matter of putting the materials that we need. I hesitate to send that out until we know what budget we're looking at, because typically that, the quantity of the purchase assists in lowering the price. If we purchase more, they lower the price. If we don't purchase as much, price goes up, so...
We have, we, the county, and we, the Budget Committee, I think according to what I understand, have an obligation to have that proposed budget published by the last day of this month? Is that correct?
It will be filed, yes.
Be filed by the last day of this month?
Not this month, August.
August, excuse me, I'm already a month ahead.
No, something.
Anyway, yeah, we still have a little grinding to do, but so at that point, I would think you would have a pretty good idea of where you were going to be, and I would, you know, I would strongly suggest that we get those things out there, even if it's an open-ended this much or more, in order to get something out there, because if we wait till the start of the budget year, we're three months into the budget year before we ever get the bids all done and closed and awarded.
I'm looking at a thirty-day turnaround on these things, just like the striping. We'll hope, we'll receive bids at one commissioner's meeting, the next commissioner's meeting, we'll award it. I expect work to be done pretty quick after that.
Okay, that's fine. I just, it distresses me, and I know you're aware of it, I piss and complain every time, but anyway, thank you. Shut up. Now you pay the bill, Shelby.
Shelby, you made the motion. I'll second it.
Motion to second to pay the bills presented, is there any discussion, questions? If not, all in favor of paying the bills as presented, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for, bills to be paid. Most to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.
And again, all raise your right hand to the floor, if you'd like to give us leave, do whatever you feel.